Good evening and welcome to the Union Bridge Town Council Candidates Forum. I'm Teresa Bethune, Vice Chair of the Community Media Center Board of Directors. Tonight's forum is being held virtually and broadcast live on cable channels HD 1086 and Channel 19. It is also being streamed live on Facebook, YouTube, and the Community Media Center's website at carolmediacenter.org. Because this meeting is being held via Zoom, our live coverage is subject to internet streaming capacity and may experience technical difficulties beyond our control. The forum will be recorded and rebroadcast on cable channel HD 1086, Channel 19, and posted online for on-demand viewing. The Community Media Center is providing this programming as a public service to the community and does not endorse any political candidate or political organization. I will now turn the program over to our moderator for the evening, Richard Turner, Executive Director of the Community Media Center. Richard?
Thank you, Teresa. As moderator for this evening, I will introduce each of the candidates. And each of those candidates will have two minutes for an opening statement. Following the forum introduction, I will ask the first question. Each candidate will then have two minutes to answer the question. All candidates will answer the identical question in rounds, and there will be no debate. This is an informational forum. At the conclusion of the question period before the end of the forum, each candidate will also have two minutes for a summary statement, and then at that time we'll go in reverse order. All responses will be timed, and I will interrupt or stop the candidate when their two-minute time has elapsed. For questions posed to tonight's candidates, there are a mixture of pre-prepared questions and questions that came from the community, from you, or some of our viewers submitted in advance to the Carroll County Times. So with that, let's begin, and I will introduce each of the candidates. Tonight, we will be starting first with Laura Conway. Laura?
Hi, my name is Laura Conway. I live in Union Bridge. I've lived in Union Bridge since the year 2000. I'm married to my husband, Joe. We've been married for almost 26 years. He is retired Army veteran. Together, we have six children, five boys, one girl ages 14 to 24. My oldest son is a grad student. I have two boys who are Carroll Community College students. I have one son. One son is a middle schooler and adult. My daughter is in high school. One of my children, one of my sons, is currently serving a two-year full-time mission for our church, where he is out serving the community where he is. I have served on the town council for three terms. I have served for 12 years in various variety of capacities and responsibilities, and I'm seeking reelection for my fourth term.
Great. Thank you, Laura. And the next candidate is Llewellyn Cutzal. Ellen?
Yes, my name is Llewellyn Cutzal. I prefer to go by Ellen. I've been on the council since I was appointed in 2004. I am a wife, a mother of three girls, and I have five grandchildren, four boys, one girl. My responsibilities on the council are the police, the parking enforcement, and trash and recycling. I have been reelected each time I've been up for reelection. I would like to be reelected again this time. However, the most important thing is whether you vote for me or not, come out and vote at the election.
Thank you, Ellen. And our next candidate is Charlene Johns. Charlene? Let's see. So let me go forward here. I may be having a little bit of technical difficulty. Let me go ahead and forward to then our next candidate, Amy Kaelin. Amy?
Hello. Thank you, everyone, for watching and taking such an interest in our awesome town of Union Bridge. Thank you, Mr. Turner, for moderating. My name is Amy Kaelin. I am running for reelection for the Union Bridge Town Council. I have been a resident and homeowner for 30 years. I've been happily married to my husband Jim for 27, and we have 17-year-old twin daughters. Our daughters attend our local Francis Scott Key High School and participate in sports and other extracurricular school activities. I have been a Union Bridge business owner and stylist at Hair &amp; Now for over 25 years. It's located at 8 North Main Street. I have been on the town council for Union Bridge for the last 16 years and the Union Bridge Planning and Zoning Commission for 14 years. I am a graduate of the University of Maryland Academy of Excellence, and I also belong to the Union Bridge Plymouth Chapter Number 41 Order of the Eastern Star. I attend Union Town Bible Church. And additionally, I have been coordinating our Drug Awareness Expo since 2015, now named Standing Together Against Addiction. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Amy. And now finally to Sherri Thompson. Sherri?
Hi, my name is Sherri Thompson, and I'm running for a seat on the Union Bridge Town Council. I'm running because I have a vested interest in the ongoing success of the town of Union Bridge. I've spent most of my life in the area, and like so many of you, my family and friends are here. I can remember when Main Street was popping and there were many more locally owned businesses and community events. I'm a proud graduate of Francis Scott Key High School. And when asked what are the two things Union Bridge has that every community wants? We have a historic Main Street, and even more importantly, we have a family-safe community. There is so much opportunity in Union Bridge. We can preserve our history and maintain our safe community as we work on strengthening what we have. I have been involved in leadership and volunteer opportunities in our town and county for many years. I decided to run the town council after being approached by many people that are familiar with my work. Year after year, I hear many of the same questions. Our citizens want to understand what our town needs to prosper. The residents need information and more opportunities to become involved where it matters. We can re-energize Main Street and attract new businesses, just as other Carroll County communities have. I've been demonstrating my commitment to Union Bridge for years, and I know hard work, and I was brought up to give 100%. I'm asking for your vote on May 11th. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Sherri. And my apologies, I broke the first rule of being a moderator, which is to do a roll call, and I realized that Charlene Johns is not able to make it this evening. So we'll have just the four candidates. So our first question for the evening has to do with a little bit about what you see as the biggest challenge or most pressing needs for the town in the next four years, and what are your plans to address it? And we will start with Ellen Cutzal. Ellen?
Yes, I'd have to say that the most pressing need that the town has, in my mind, is more economic development. Been trying to work on that throughout my stay as a councilperson. It's a little bit hard to do because we're a small town without some of the main things that most towns have, like a gas station or a bank. But we all work together, and we have worked together in the past. Our residents put the time in to run the breakfast that actually paid off our town ball ahead of time. So I'd have to say that the economic development is the most important thing. The one thing that we could use would be residential development, however, not at the expense of the existing residents. So if we're going to do residential development, it has to be done in the proper way.
Thank you. And Amy?
I would say our biggest challenges, agreed, are our development. Yes, we wanted to move ahead and we want to make changes, but we want the development to continue and to also be what is best for the residents. Always an ongoing infrastructure, sewers, drainage, sidewalks, accessible sidewalks, trails, parks, always safety. We want to connect our town in as many ways as possible.
Great. Thank you. And next, Sherri?
I would say it would be business growth, and it starts on Main Street. We need to revitalize our empty storefronts by getting people to give everything a fresher look. I think we could hold community events, maybe an open house, and try to get some investors involved and maybe helping some people to start a business on Main Street. Everyone that has come into the town with the few businesses that are existing just love the town. They love the quaintness, and I think if we were to focus and utilize the grants that are out there, we would be able to grow both the businesses as well as grow the residents and the new development. If we would just utilize the grants that are out there, I think we can make this all happen. And as we work together as a team, I know we can make it happen.
Thank you. And finally, Laura?
We are still in the middle of a pandemic, and I know that families are struggling to put food on their tables and to make ends meet. And I believe that keeping our taxes where they are and not raising our taxes like we have done the last few years. Also, I believe in smart growth, responsible growth. I don't feel that the existing town residents should be responsible for paying for an upgraded water and sewer system if we have a new development come in. I believe that that should be absorbed by the developer, and it should not be passed on solely on the existing residents. We are suffering. We have many people who are without jobs and just need the help, and I don't want to take any more money from our residents as we need.
Great. Thank you. Our next question came from the community, and the question is to please, asking each of you to share three recent things that you've done for the town, and we'll start with Amy.
I actually work on our Main Street, so I'm a living, breathing example of a business owner. I communicate with our residents daily, finding out needs and wants and give them direction to set them on the right path to achieve those goals. I also am a constant coordinator of our annual Drug Awareness Expo. And I do have to give a shout out to our Master Deputy Brian Calusi. Without him, this event would not go on. We meet monthly. It is ongoing. This is an event that's come a long way in an effort to help residents in Union Bridge and surrounding areas be informed of the newest drug concerns and prevention methods. That would be the second thing. Also, I'm in charge of our water and sewer, which means I'm the liaison for complaints in a nutshell, and I do that on a daily basis. I have people call me, and we iron out issues and get them resolved.
Great. Thank you. Next, we go to Sherri.
Okay, the number one thing that I'm most proud of is I am the co-founder of Dream Big Union Bridge, which is a community-based organization solely of volunteers who we go out and we fulfill whatever the need might be for the community, whether it be a resident needing some assistance or the town needing banners. We purchase banners for the town, "Welcome to Union Bridge." During the pandemic, we reached out to the seniors. We got to give them brainstorm, went door-to-door to seniors to see if they needed groceries picked up, medication picked up. We just needed someone to check on them, so that's something that I'm very, very proud of. I also have been very active with the Drug Awareness Expo. I've helped with that for the last two years, and it's something that's very near and dear to my heart. People need to be educated on all the types of addiction that are out there, and it does affect, I think, just about everybody out there in one way or another. I also co-manage the Union Bridge Gift Shop, which is also run by Dream Big Union Bridge. And in its conception, it has brought nothing but positive feedback from the public. We've got people coming from all over Carroll County and surrounding states, and it's just really made things upbeat, something I'm very, very proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. And now we'll go to Laura.
All right. So one recent thing I have worked on, in February, our town finally ordered some new Christmas lights. That might not seem like a big deal, but they are very costly, so we ordered 10 new Christmas lights for our electric poles. But the thing that I worked on for the Christmas lights was that we did not have money in our budget to pay for them upfront, and so I negotiated with the seller, and he was willing to push off and defer payment until our next fiscal year, which begins in July. So we were able to get new Christmas lights in our next budget and have them this Christmas, but not pay for them until July. Another thing I have done is for seven years, I have been acting as a town liaison for Elmer Wolf, and I have visited the schools to present the If I Were Mayor Essay Writing Contest sponsored by the MML. This year, because of the pandemic, they asked that I not visit their classrooms, but I do a video. And so I made a video. I posted it on Facebook. We posted it on our town website. I posted it on the Elmer Wolf PTO page just to ask and invite youth fourth writers to submit essays to us, and we received 26 this year. One thing that I am proud of that I have done is I advocate for the community. Last year, when the pandemic just began, we didn't have an emergency feeding location within our community, and I reached out to the school superintendent to see if we could either have Elmer Wolf opened up to help feed the youth of our community, or if I could have, if the school would actually deliver food to bus stops. And two weeks later, an emergency location opened up, and I learned today that they, last week, they served 114 children between the ages of 2 and 18, and they will be open this summer also to help our community.
Thank you. And finally, Ellen?
Well, a couple of things I'm proud of. One of the first ones would be that I finally found a parking enforcement person who seems to work very good with the town. It's a very difficult job to fill because you're out there giving tickets that nobody wants to give, and quite often you can be confronted in a very nice manner. So we now have a very good parking enforcement person strolling our streets. I've also been involved while on the council with the Solid Waste Advisory Council in Carroll County and the Carroll County Environmental Advisory Council. And Solid Waste Advisory Council is no longer in effect, but the EAC is. We just recently had our Environmental Awareness Awards, where we request people to submit write-ups on things that businesses, schools, or individuals have done to make the rest of the county aware of environmental issues and things that they have done to improve the environment. The other thing that I do is I handle trash complaints and police complaints. When someone has something that they want to talk about, that's not necessarily, I need to call a policeman right now. Quite often, I get the call and work with Brian, our Master Deputy Sheriff, to get it resolved to the best of our ability. And the last thing I've done is we're going forward with our nuisance ordinance and have actually started to schedule some meetings to deal with those properties that have become a nuisance to our community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our next question, we'll start with Sherri. And the question is, do you think the town needs to attract more businesses?
Absolutely. There is definitely a need. We have a lot of empty storefronts on Main Street and the outlying areas. And again, in order to do that, I think that would be the best way to utilize that would be to be getting involved with economic development from the county level, and again, holding an open house, bringing in bankers, investors, even kids from the college to help learn what the needs are to start a business. I think if we could grow the business, I think if we get more residents in here, they'll support the businesses. The few businesses that have come in town have been extremely successful in the last two years. And again, we're drawing people from all over, so if we can revitalize Main Street, clean it up, give the storefronts a nice fresh look, I think more people will be inclined to want to set up shop. We've got a lot of opportunity here, and people have been very, very supportive of the businesses that are here. So I definitely see a need to grow a business. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we'll go to Laura.
Yes, we definitely need to attract new business in town. I'm happy to say that we have been fortunate because we have received some new businesses lately, and they seem to be doing very well. I think that the goal for Union Bridge should be to find unique businesses that will draw people in. We have a brewery that just opened that brings in all kinds of crowds on the weekends. We have a little produce shop that brings crowds in. And these are the things that will draw people, not just in Union Bridge, but from outlying areas. And that's what we need. We need people to come into town, visit our area, visit our community, and build up our businesses. And then we can expand, and we can have, you know, help our town with the taxes and just the visibility and put us on the map.
Thank you. And next, we'll go to Ellen.
Yes, the town of Union Bridge definitely could use some economic development. I'm all for that. We've tried to get some businesses in the past. We've been successful with some. Unfortunately, because of the size of our town, it's difficult to get a bank to invest in the properties or in the businesses because they don't feel that we have enough residents to carry a business, as was seen when the one grocery store tried to come in, where we now have the Dollar General store. So yes, definitely need businesses, and we've been working on that all along.
Thank you. And finally, Amy?
Yes, definitely. I would love to see our Main Street flourish more. We have many business owners that are our residents. We have wonderful and talented business owners on our Main Street. I feel we need to seek grants and have downtown events to draw people in. We can also brand as a small historical town with vintage appeal. We, as a council, need to work together with the business owners and the downtown homeowners. We also need to support these businesses by keeping it local and keeping the lines of communication open. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we'll go to Laura with the next question, which would be, what would you propose to help support existing small businesses?
That is a good question. What would I do to support existing businesses? I would love to see more mobile advertising for them. Maybe if we can get them to offer specials to residents. I love, years ago, we had a train depot, and it was a big day, and we had lots of the businesses participated in just giving away ice cream, you know, or popsicles or free drinks that day, just giving out little vouchers. And I think that that really helped a lot of businesses, for businesses, maybe that, I was new in town at the time and had not gone into their businesses prior to that. I think we should maybe do a town, a Union Bridge guide to help give out to new residents, maybe send them out somehow in the newsletters or however to get the word out that there are businesses out there, and they are thriving in what they can do for the town.
Thank you. And Ellen?
It's a hard one to say. Pretty much anytime a business has come to ask us to do something, if it was within our power, we've tried to help them do it. There are grants out there for small businesses. Unfortunately, they're ones that the businesses mostly have to apply for themselves. There aren't a lot of grants to, you know, brighten up the Main Street quarter. There are some, and we have looked into those into the past. Unfortunately, most grants require a matching funding, which means that we either have to get funding from some other kind of program or get funding directly from the town, where there's not a whole lot of money there to do that with. But advertising also is another good way to get them in here. A lot of the businesses that are flourishing now are because of the fact that not only do they have a very good product, but the people who frequent their businesses use word of mouth to get their business out and be known.
Thank you. And next, we'll go to Amy.
Being a business owner, I think I network with a lot of our other local businesses here. It is a huge help. We word of mouth rely on each other. And I think downtown festivals or downtown events and activities really draw and really help us. And I can say it 100 times, but keeping it local, we can self-sustain with what we have here in Union Bridge. We have some really, really amazing businesses. They just need support. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, finally, we'll go to Sherri.
Okay, again, I'm going to ditto everyone else. We definitely need to have events on Main Street to get the people to patronize those businesses. Back in the day, when I was president of the Union Bridge Business Association, we held our Depot Day. And what we did is we had like a punch card that each person had to go get stamped by each of the businesses. And then if you had a pool card, you would put in a drawing for a prize. So that really motivated the people to visit each business. One of the things that I'd like to see is if we could create maybe incentives for the businesses, get them on board with doing like punch cards. Advertising is extremely expensive. That's my background. I used to sell advertising. I think an easy way to get your word out, spread your business, is perhaps if we start mailing the town newsletter out and get the businesses to purchase a small ad at a very small fee with maybe a coupon, that too would alert people that the business is there and what it has, and also offer them discounts. So it would be a way of inviting people into the businesses that they wouldn't normally frequent. So I feel very strongly about the need for the events and especially seasonal events.
Thank you. And next, we'll turn to Laura with the next question. Did I got this right? Sorry, Ellen. The next question, please describe your involvement in the town affairs and how often you attend town meetings?
About the town affairs, let's start with the meetings first. Usually, I'm there for every work session and every town meeting. We have two meetings a month, a work session on the second Monday, town meeting on the fourth Monday. And I'm usually there for every one of those, even the ones we've been doing virtual, and for special meetings when they're called, which we've had a couple of those in my time as a councilperson. And could you repeat the first part of the question again?
Yeah, and any other involvement than you've already mentioned in town affairs?
Well, right now, I'm trying to work on getting a trash and recycling ordinance written because we've never had one in the town of Union Bridge, the only municipality in the county that doesn't. I was instrumental in working up the original nuisance ordinance that we had put together, which wasn't the one that passed, but we did do another one that did pass. I'm basically, right now, pretty much available at any time. Anybody has a question about anything I cover, they're more than welcome to ask me. And I'm also a notary of public, which means that you need something notarized. I'm your person, whether it be for town business or individuals that live in the town.
Great. Thank you. We'll go to Amy next.
I attend all of our meetings, work sessions, council meetings, any special meetings. And I also attend monthly Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. I am the EXO official from the town council to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I also attend meetings for our Drug Awareness Expo, Standing Together Against Addiction, and any special water or sewer meetings that we may have, being the liaison for that.
Thank you. And we'll turn to Sherri next.
Okay, I have pretty much attended every town council meeting, either in person or virtual. I try to participate in as many events that the fire company has back when they were allowed to have events. Dream Big Union Bridge, which I'm co-founder of, I lead and conduct a meeting monthly with them. I also help with the St. James Lutheran Church's food pantry, which, well, during the pandemic, when it was at its peak, I helped quite frequently there. I also am a notary, so I'm available. I, I also am a notary, so I'm available if anyone needs anything notarized. And I have attended most of, if not all of the drug expo meetings as well. So where there's a need, I usually try to help out.
Thank you. And finally, Laura.
So in the past 12 years I have served in the town council, I have missed exactly three meetings. I take my job seriously. When I am telling you I will be there, I am responsible and I will be there. So I attend all my town meetings and I have missed three in the past 12 years. I have represented the town on the Carroll Cable Regulatory Commission where we have quarterly meetings. I have been a volunteer at the local elementary school. I, every year during National American Education Week, I serve donuts to parents and grandparents and students. I have coached locally at Elmer Wolf. I have been a mentor for at-risk youth at Elmer Wolf. I am involved in things behind the scenes that maybe aren't always visible to the naked eye beyond, beyond my appointed abilities. Married me two years ago. He asked me to organize the 150 for, I have participated for the fire department's virtual or drive-through, just had the slippery pot pie this weekend. Did it was excellent as always liaison for Elmer Wolf Elementary.
Thank you. And Laura, apologies, we're having just maybe a little bit of internet connectivity issues with you. So hopefully that will hold up. All right, for our next question, we'll go to Amy. And this question comes from the community, from those that questions that were solicited. And what three adjectives would someone use to describe you?
Wow, that's loaded. Um, busy. Go-getter. And loving.
Thank you. All right, this is going to be a short round. Next we'll go to Sheri. Three adjectives.
Okay. Passionate, dedicated and committed.
Thank you. Laura?
Sorry, I was trying to let my husband know to get my children off the internet. I think they're slowing down. I would say honest, I'm, I'm honest in dealing with my phone. I take pride in that I'm hardworking. I think otherwise I'm hardworking. I was one of the two people selected to give Maryland Municipal League for the summer because it is limited. And I was one of two people and were behind the scenes and I'm reliable. I attend my town meetings when I, if someone wants me to be there, I'm there.
Thank you. And Ellen.
Questioning in that when we have something coming for the town council that we need to know about, instead of just voting on it right away, I'm going to question and ask so that I can make sure that I can understand it in case I need to talk to the residents and then explain it to them. Volunteer, because I volunteered quite a bit. I volunteered at the breakfast that we used to put on to help raise the funds to pay for the town hall. I was an MCE certified volunteer for the 4H program in Carroll County for many years, even after my children had finished the 4H program. And I have been a constant volunteer for MML and the Engagement and Outreach Committee and also at the conferences.
Thank you. Now we'll go to Sheri for the next question. And this would be a just question on service priorities. And which of the services do you believe have the higher priorities? And how do you balance those out across all the services that the town offers?
Well, the priority is to fulfill the needs of the citizens. I know that especially if there's a water sewer issue, that that's taken care of in a very timely manner, if not immediately. So I feel that that's the number one priority when there's a need to have it addressed and taken care of. Another priority would be keeping the citizens informed of what's going on. They need to be involved. They need to know. They need to be educated.
Thank you. Next we'll go to Laura.
I agree with the water and sewer. I think that is a priority to make sure that we have affordable water and sewer. The water and sewer has to pay for itself and costly upgrades that will be passed on to the consumer. So it's important for us to have reliable water and sewer services.
Thank you. And Ellen?
Could I ask you to repeat the question?
Sure. The question is about service priorities and which do you think take priority of the services? And how do you balance that in terms of the needs for the remaining services in the town?
So we're talking about all the services that the town provides for the residents. And yes, water and sewer is very important because you definitely need to have good drinking water and you definitely need to have a place to go to the bathroom. Each service that the town provides is handled by a different council person. So there's always somebody available for any service that's needed, regardless of what else is going on. So it's not really a matter of where I have to say, okay, I've got an issue with water and sewers I need to handle right away. So I need to put everything else on the back burner or limit who's dealing with it. So everything's pretty much covered at any given time.
Thank you. And finally, we'll go to Amy.
I agree with everyone. Water and sewer being a huge deal. And also, I mean, all of our utilities and our trash pickup and our roads. And we have a wonderful officer that comes to our town. He, we couldn't do many things without him. He protects us and our volunteer fire company. So I mean, everybody has a role, whether it's volunteered or paid, and we work very well together.
Thank you. And next we'll go to Laura for the next question, uh, which is on development. How do you see the town developing? Do you see their need for growth and development? Is that you, what's your perspective on growth? Let's go into Laura. See if we, I think we may have lost her internet connection because I will come back to Laura. Let me go to Ellen next and.
Repeat the question so I make sure I get it right.
Your, the question is your view on development and growth in the town. So you see, how do you perceive growth?
Okay, um, my view on development and growth in the town. I would be so happy to see this town develop and grow as long as it's not at the cost of the existing citizens. The one development that is right outside of town has been on the books for over 20 years. Because in order to build, there needs to be upgrades or a new wastewater treatment plant put in. And as a responsible council person, I find it hard to say, okay, the town's going to pay for this so the developer can build the houses and more people can come in. And that means that the residents who currently are here, who do not need more room in the water and sewer, would be the ones footing the bill for it. As long as we have responsible development and we grow that way, I'm all for it. We've had some, not residential development, but we have a farm on the outskirts of town that is in the process of being annexed into the town where they're going to be building a solar farm. So we've had some growth, not a lot of growth in the time that I've lived here, but it's been responsible growth. And that's the main thing.
Okay, thank you. And Amy?
Um, yes, we want development to continue and to also be what is best for the residents always. In that sense, we want to help guide and work along with the projects so they, as are we, held accountable. It is also important to me, in my opinion, to preserve our history of our town, yet continue to grow our town in good ways and keep our unique vintage appeal.
Thank you. And Sheri?
I too agree that there's a big importance for development growth. In order for us to grow and get the businesses in here, we're obviously going to have to grow. And I think if we just practice smart growth and we utilize the available grants and look for new ones, especially to offset the cost of the needed infrastructure, for example, wastewater treatment plant grant. I know other municipalities have been very successful when they reached out to get these grants. So I know that they are available. It's just a matter of working it and getting it going. I feel that if we get behind the development and we work as a team to keep the image that Union Bridge has, the quaint small town, I think we can move into a future and keep us that small, nice old town kind of charm. So I feel very strongly that we are at a crossroads now where we need to grow and we just need to do it's just do smart growth.
Thank you. And I see we got Laura back. Hopefully your internet connection is holding up. And I don't know if you heard the question or not, but it was regarding growth and development in the town and your, your perspective on growth.
All right, yes, I am back to the land of living for now. I hope it stays for a little bit. I believe in responsible and smart growth. I don't feel that the existing, the existing town resident should be paying for the upgrade in the new water sewer system that is needed for new development. I don't think that cost should be spread out to us. We have seen what that has done to New Windsor and that has raised their water and sewer rates astronomically. And we cannot do that to our residents. It's not fair to them and they don't deserve it. So I believe in smart growth, that the development will have to pay for their own water and sewer. So it's not directly impacting our town.
Great. Thank you. And the next question is on economic development. Beyond attracting new businesses or supporting the existing businesses, are there other methods of economic development within the town? And let's see, I will go ahead and start with Laura this time.
Okay, I'm sorry. Could you repeat that question again if there is?
Sure thing. It's about economic development and beyond attracting businesses. Are there other methods of getting economic development within the town?
I like the idea of having events, holding events in town, maybe bringing in some food trucks, having our local businesses provide services and advertise that way. I just believe just bringing people into town is the biggest, get them in here, get them to stay, hold events, hold merit badge for Boy Scouts, have, have merit badge days. We can have something at Lehigh, which we have done in the past, have something at the train station where there's, you know, train merit badges or whatever there are, maybe cooking merit badges. Maybe there's a restaurant who will be willing to have, you know, help teach a cooking merit badge or something like that. But I think we, we bring people in, they will stay. We bring them in for different events. They'll want to patronize the other businesses that are in town. And I think that's just the key is bringing people into town and getting them to stay.
Thank you. Ellen?
Well, I agree with Laura, the events and things like that. There are things that we can do that have been successful in other towns. I know that one time, um, the Maryland Municipal League had done a geocache trail throughout the state of Maryland. And that was pretty successful for bringing people in to frequent our businesses and bringing in business. Something that could be done would, could be a scavenger hunt where each business has something that they have to find in their business to, to mark on a card that somebody gets a prize at the end. I would have to say that flood zone seems to have the right idea. There's always a crowd at flood zone, um, which flows over into Lucy's Market, JD's Primitive Art. And quite often you'll see the people that come into flood zone are walking up Main Street, past the Railroad Museum, Buttersburg, the dream big gift store, checking out the businesses that we have here. So maybe we could work in hand with the businesses that are already here to create events that would bring more people in.
Thank you. And Amy?
I agree, events within the town. We could, having done National Night Out, that brings people out and it brings people from the outskirts of town into town. Our Drug Awareness Expo is extremely successful and helpful. And we have talked about doing five Ks and our, on our trails, um, you know, health fairs and, and events like that to help everyone, the bookmobile coming in, you know, it sounds small, but it's a huge deal and it's very helpful. So more things like that.
Thank you. And Sheri?
I too want to ditto on the events, but I think we need to have unique events, things that are different from what all the other towns have. We've got a lot of things we can play on. One thing in particular that's near and dear to my heart is our annual duck derby that we have. We launch the ducks at the walking trail and they come upstream and they are gathered at the main street bridge. And it's something that people really talk about. It's unique. It's fun. It's just off the wall, crazy fun. And people seem to really enjoy that. I think that if we could do, just find a couple of key things like the Depot Day and possibly some kind of an outdoor unique New Year's Eve event, there's a couple of things that are playing in my mind that we could do to get people involved. And even during the holidays, decorating Main Street, having contests, that's what we did for Halloween and the people, it just took off like crazy. So I think if we implement more contests and things to get people involved, word gets out and people come into town because they want to check out what these decorations are. So I think there's a lot of room to do a lot of economic development, growing to get people in our town.
Great, thank you. And that concludes the question portion. And we're about to go to closing statements. Before we go, I just wanted to thank the viewers who submitted questions. It's always great to be able to have the opportunity to engage them and make sure that they are including and figuring out how to make their selection for town council and getting their questions is certainly one way to have that happen. So now we'll turn to closing statements and we'll start again, we're going to go in reverse order from our opening statement. So we'll start with Sheri.
Okay, um, I, I'm, my track record, I think, shows that I can lead, plan and deliver. I may ask them for your vote on May 11th because together we can get it done. I've been demonstrating my commitment to Union Bridge for years. I know hard work and I was brought up to give 100%. I grew up raising horses and helping run my father's business. I've been a leader in the local J C's and Union Bridge Business Association. And four years ago, I co-founded Dream Big Union Bridge because I saw a need and I could help fill that need. Our town means a lot to me and I have developed the leadership skills that will make a valuable council person. So therefore I'm just asking for your vote on May 11th. I thank you and God bless.
Thank you. And now we'll turn to Amy.
I wanted to thank you again for moderating, Mr. Turner. Thank you. You made it very comfortable. Um, I would also like to thank all the candidates for participating and for your love of Union Bridge. This forum has brought up many subjects and to light, it's brought them to light and caused great discussions. And it just proves how great our town is. I would like to continue my efforts on the Union Bridge Town Council. The council consists of dedicated community members who each play an integral part and in the events and everything within the town. And it is my goal to continue to do my part. So please vote Amy Kalin for Union Bridge Town Council. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we'll turn to Ellen. Thank you. And next we'll turn to Ellen.
This has been quite a different experience doing it on Zoom and it's been fun. We've talked about a lot of things. Honestly, I run the same campaign that I run every time I'm up for reelection. If you come to the meetings and/or you watch them on TV, or if you participated in the Zoom meetings, you know exactly what I do on the council. It's all out there, a board, easy for you to see. And if you like what I do, by all means, please vote for me. If you don't think that I do anything or that I'm not doing enough for you, I would like you not to vote for me. And if you don't think I'm doing anything at all and you don't like the job I'm doing, run against me in a future election. That being said, whether you vote for me or you vote for someone else, come and vote in the election. It's very important.
Thank you. And finally, we'll turn to Laura.
Thank you, Richard, for moderating. I know you said you were nervous earlier. I don't think you're any more nervous than I am. So thank you. I just wanted to say that I have been fighting for the town, for the residents and my neighbors for 12 years. That's not gonna give up. I'm not gonna give that up. I'm fighting. I've always fought. I'm an advocate for you. I have voted to keep taxes down. I have voted to bring revenues in through the solar farm. I have been an advocate for bringing community emergency feeding meals and locations to the town Union Bridge to serve our youth, our children who are in desperate need of nourishment and food. I am reliable. I have only missed three meetings in 12 years. I'm hardworking. I have been given additional responsibilities from Mayor Jones because of my hard work. I do a lot of things behind the scenes that are beyond my appointed responsibilities. I am in charge of Christmas lights, Christmas banners, streetlights, the knowing contract. But those are just a tiny portion of the things that I do every day for the town. I do, I help out with editing minutes and editing the newsletter. I have been a town liaison for Elmer Wolf for several, seven years. And I have served on various committees and capacities and been a volunteer. And I love Union Bridge. I love our community and I'm always gonna fight for it.
Thank you. And finally, in wrap up, I wanted to thank all the candidates. You know, sometimes people don't realize what it takes to step up and actually serve. And all the things that goes on behind the scenes as well as in front of the scene sometimes. So thank you for your commitment to serving your community. And we appreciate that commitment and making yourselves available so that our viewers could have a better idea who to vote for. And with that, I'm gonna turn it back over to Teresa Batum. Thank you. No, Teresa would need your microphone.
Zoom is great, right? I want to join Richard in thanking all the candidates who are with us this evening, as well as Richard for moderating. And as everyone knows, he is our executive director of the Community Media Center. Special thanks to everyone who submitted questions for tonight's forum as well. This forum has been recorded and it will be available for on-demand viewing on our website at carolmediacenter.org and on YouTube. It will also be rebroadcast on cable channel HD 1086 and channel 19 until Election Day. The first rebroadcast will be on cable channel HD 1086 on Wednesday and Thursday, April 28th and 29th at 10:30 PM and Friday, April 30th at 10:00 PM. Before we go, I'd like to encourage everyone to learn about the candidates running in the 2021 municipal elections by visiting CNC's online voters guide at carolmediacenter.org. Thank you all for joining us and good night.